Always happy to face that I'm so glad to see you and glad to meet you. So, at this time we will call our meeting to order and if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This city, please. If we have a motion to approve this agenda and present it, motion by Mr. Davis and second by Mr. Schiff. I don't know if this paper is anything on my saying aye, those opposed, no. Do we have any additions to the agenda? I don't see any. Would anyone like to remove me in line from the center agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve it? Motion by Mr. Clark. Seconded by Mr. John. All those in favor who let it be known by saying aye, those opposed, no. Motion denied. Dr. Burden, direct to the floor.
Thank you. Just a few things from the instructional side. We are offering online registration this year for the first time. We're excited about that and it will be for returning students in first through 12th grades. And online registration will be open July 15th through the 31st. There should be a flyer in your packet and that's a copy of the flyer that we sent home to all of our students when they're coming home for part of May. And we know that we may have some parents or grandparents who need technical assistance. So we are, we have three days where they can either go to their school or to the central office to receive help with online registration. So hopefully that process will be smooth in the month of July. As we look towards the possibility of reopening schools in August, I'm sure you're aware that we did survey our parents this week. It was a very brief three-question survey. We used our district call-out system to send that out and the questions were regarding technology, transportation, and then whether or not if conditions in August are similar to what they are now if parents would be sending their children back to school. And the majority of people did indicate that they, that they will be doing so. So we have begun discussions on some virtual learning scenarios. I know Mr. Benson asked me about that earlier today for students whose parents may be a little hesitant to send them back. For example, our medical graduate students, but we are, we will continue to develop a plan in, in the next coming weeks and hopefully be able to share that with you all. A couple more things. We had four students from Muffin High School who were featured in the Tennessee Magazine in June. And these four students were winners of the, make sure I get this correct, 2020 Creative Writing and Scholarship Competition that was sponsored by the electric corporate, corporate and cooperative, excuse me, association. And those four students were Jessie Brooks, Rebecca Callahan, Samantha Carlyle, and Aiden Williams. And I think typically they'll be going on a trip to Washington, but they couldn't do that obviously because of coronavirus. So those students are receiving a $1,500 scholarship. So we certainly want to congratulate those. And then the last thing I have in your packet, there is a memo from Marion Samuel. If you want to take a look at that. She has provided a copy of the Title I, Title II, and Title IV budgets for fiscal year 21. And tonight we will need approval for the consolidated federal application. And Marion gave you a brief explanation at the beginning of each one as to what the changes are. So I'm happy to answer questions or I will try to answer questions if anyone has those. If I can't answer, I'll certainly give the information back to you. But I would like to recommend that the board approve the local consolidated application for federal funding and all other federal funds for fiscal year 21. And authorize the Director of Schools to make any necessary budget provisions, addenda amendments, or transfer requests as needed.
Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Motion, motion called, seconded by Mr. Schiff. Is there any question? Dr. Burden, describe.
I got a poll on the survey when you said to me, my yard ain't, yeah, I said it was. I'm gonna get my yard.
The questions, we have only done all the three questions. All the responses. Do we want to vote on this and then come back? That's already on the form.
That's the one thing that's voting first.
Okay, yeah. All those in favor who let it be known by saying aye, those opposed, no.
Okay. We had, Dr. Hough, correctly, it got misquoted in these numbers. We were actually looking at them earlier today. We had forty, 4,484 responses and that was out of 6,107 households. So the response rate was seventy.
Seventy-one.
And the guesses for the thirty questions range from sixty percent to seventy percent of guesses that they, about transportation technology and sending their kids back to school.
What was the number of questions percentage of your guests were supposed to send their kids back to school?
Fifty-nine point four.
And some of them, Mr. Benson, after they did, if they said no on question number one, then a lot of them just hung up and didn't finish the rest of the survey.
Right.
So we didn't get some responses in the second ones.
The second question was the one regarding technology. No, it was about transportation. The third was about technology, whether or not they had reliable internet and a device, if their students could access the internet other than a cell phone.
And that number, the technology number, wasn't that like seventy?
Seventy percent.
Seventy said they, seventy said they did, thirty percent said they didn't.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Burden? Thank you, Dr. Burden.
Can I ask you another question about this? Let's, let's call it sixty percent said they'd send their kids back to school and they're like, they're like now. I'm sure that will go up as things, but hopefully as things get better, you think. If you had to estimate what percentage of parents come, time to go to school would say yes, they're gonna send their kids back to school, what, what would you estimate that to be?
When it's closer to time, I think it would be more eighty-two. I do. For one thing, we've had a number of calls up to the central office that said, hey, look, you know, I voted no. Look, I'm, I'm, will my child have to wear a mask? That's why I didn't do it. And I said, and if we said no, masks aren't going to be mandatory, which would be very possible, then a lot of those would go ahead and send them back. And they said, well, I don't want to send my child to school if they have to wear a mask all day because they have asthma or maybe some other reason they don't, you know. So there are a number of things like that that we got calls about that if there were more details in the survey, I think we would have more that said, yes, let's go ahead. And once more people know the plan that we put in place, I think we'll have more people say, okay, I feel a little better about that. But that was the purpose of the survey was just to get an initial feel. You know, we weren't trying to take a deep dive yet, so, yes, sir.
It's a good question. So are you working on a plan for the twenty percent that don't want to come back?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely. And we're gonna, the, our goal is to get you all a plan for y'all to approve or look at and, you know, give feedback on by the first week in July. That's our plan. So even if we have to have many special call meetings, we'll try to have some. We can give them, roll them. Yes, sir.
Whatever they come up with, we'll have to approve it, the board will, so we may have to have a call meeting early in July before that gets done. You know, so what can we recommend? Is that up there? Show a meeting, get it done, get it going. Mr. Murray, are we getting any correction from the State Department of Education about, let's just say we have twenty percent that doesn't want to come back? Are we giving any direction on what we can do for that twenty percent so that we'll get funding for that?
That's a, that's a very good question. The kids have to stay in-house, not necessarily in the building, but within the county schools for us to be funded for those children. So we are obviously trying to do everything we can just because, number one, we want to educate them because we missed out, you know, a number of them had to cut it short last year. And we're already worried that, that they're behind academically because of that. So, um, yes, we're trying, every, we're thinking of every scenario we can so that every child, all hundred percent of them will have some academic learning going on. If they, they don't feel comfortable being in the building because of a precondition or whatever, then we're looking at some virtual stuff for some of them. Even give us some packet stuff. And we're, we're looking at a number of things, even maybe live streaming some, some lessons. Uh, there are a number of things that we're looking at. Yes, sir.
So they will, they will accept virtual if the child is not in the building?
Correct. Yes, sir. If, if we have a plan that is prescribed and approved and all that kind of stuff, yes, sir. It has to be an approved plan. We just, we can't say, hey, look, you know, one of our teachers sent something this week, watch that video and, and we'll check off if you watched it. You get a grade for that week. It won't be quite that simple. We'll have to have a structured plan. But yes, sir, as long as we can keep up with them virtually and have a plan for both, then that's what we're looking at.
Has, has it even been mentioned?
No, sir. It has not, surely. Well, and the thing is, you know, they're leaving it, you know, talking about the state department. So we're getting all these guidelines, right? The, the Board of Education sends us guidelines, the, the State Department of Education sends us guidelines. We have CDC, we have State Health Department. We're up to our eyeballs in guidelines. No one has given us for sure, do this answer. Everything's just guidelines, you know, here's some ideas. Well, everybody's, it's gonna be different in every single district because of access to whatever, you know, or the size of the district. It's gonna, or if you're spread out or not. So what they're doing in one district may not be what they're doing in another district. You know, Millington may not be doing what Lauderdale is doing. And so by that, what they may have is staggered days and all these other things. I don't, I don't know how they will be able to keep up with an attendance the li- like they have in the past. I mean, that's, that's gonna be hard to say you're required to be there if everybody can have a different plan. You know what I mean? So we're waiting on guidance, waiting on guidance from that as well.
So you have any guidelines for the virtual learning option from the state?
Not really, no, sir. I mean, just, just things that we can do and does anybody have any other ideas, those kind of things. For no part sake, I don't know.
Mr. Ross, I don't have anything to do.
Have you considered year rouse?
You know, I haven't had anybody ask that. We have, I mean, that's been, in one of the districts discussed that number, which one it was, but they had talked about that in one of our calls. But so far I haven't heard anyone jump on that yet.
Not yet. Dr. Combs, you know, not have any, any more interest in the catch where virtual academy?
We've been discussing that. You know, trying to keep something near, might be like a virtual academy type thing where we can do that. But we're working on the details on that right now to see if that's a viable option. Yes, sir.
Dr. Fisher, Director of Operations, report.
Okay. I wanted to just update you, moving on, a meal service provided by the Food Service Department. From March thirteenth to, through May thirty-first, we have served 198,000 meals throughout our Tipte County communities. Our meals were provided, you know, at the local school sites as drive-through. We provided those meals at Muffin Elementary, Brighton Elementary, Drummond, Austin P, Covington High School. And then we also had our Tipte County School buses that delivered to community sites throughout the community. And those sites were designated by pockets of children that lived together. Of course, we could not tie up traffic and one stops, but we did go to where a majority of our children live in pockets. The summer feeding program began on May twenty-sixth. And so during our first four days of operation of that week, we've served 14,000 meals just in those four days. So we are still meeting the need of our children in terms of feeding. We still, we've continued with our drive-through locations so parents can still drive through. Children don't have to be present. Anyone can drive up and say they need X number of meals and receive those meals. We still have our buses that are also driving through the community. We have three buses serving here in Covington and they're averaging 150 meals per day from each bus that they are serving. And then also we are driving to Mason. Our Drummond's buses are serving on the average of 200 meals per bus. And we have two buses that are also serving there as well as drive-through at Drummond. So our food service staff and our transportation staff have really worked together, our drivers, to try to pull this off. Mr. Glass has, has really tried to coordinate. We struggle some with workers that, you know, are not able to work during the summer without those earning unemployment. So we've had to really structure that a little bit differently. But those are our local heroes that have really pitched in and helped us continue to feed our children. So that's still very important.
Charlotte, excuse me, was it, was that 198,000?
One hundred and ninety-eight thousand meals, yes, sir. And just remember that when we serve meals, each meal, we serve two meals to children. We serve a breakfast and a lunch. They get both of those meals at the same time. So just to make you very aware of that.
And you count that as one or two?
We count that as two meals, yes, sir. That's two different, two separate meals. That's how the state counts that as well, yes, sir. Um, with adult education, we have been encouraged by the state all along to reopen our adult education classes. Uh, they have allowed us to have some additional funding, critical funds in order to meet the need in terms of our students that possibly don't have devices. So we are beginning Monday, June fifteenth, we will begin our face-to-face sessions again with our adult education students. That's our, those seeking their GED or I said, I'm sorry. But they will come to the teen learning center by appointment only. That's how we're gonna start here in Covington. Those are the only classes we're gonna open up right now. We have continued working with them through packets that have been sent home and face-to-face we will begin, as I stated, on Monday. We will be monitoring our COVID numbers to possibly open up our other locations. Uh, all staff and students will be screened daily. That's temperature checks and symptoms screening and that will be documented and kept on file. Uh, classroom spaces will be socially distanced. Students will be encouraged to wear their mask or facial covering and to wash their hands, of course, frequently. And then we will be cleaning those surfaces, cleaning and disinfecting after all of the usage there. So that's one of our first openings, we'll be June fifteenth for that. In the next coming days, we will also make a decision on school age childcare for the month of July. So that's another big decision as well as working on transportation and all other, so we'll go into our, for reopen.
When you say that the decision be made about school age childcare?
In the coming day.
Now, you're gonna open, is that today?
No, sir, I didn't say.
Oh, okay. Oh, you know, you know. That's what I was wanting.
No, sir. Said we're gonna make a decision about that for the month of July. Yes, sir.
Um, let me add on things, some top features up here. You know, I don't know if I told you all this, but if, if, let's just take a bus, for example. We were talking about guidelines earlier, right? With all the guidelines that were given. If we abide by some of the suggested guidelines that have been sent down to us from various agencies and you're socially distancing on a bus, right? So on a seventy-two passenger bus, we can fit twelve kids on it. So you think about that, you think about the fact that we have a hundred and sixty-five-ish buses, is that right, Dr. Fisher?
Hundred forty-seven.
Hundred forty-seven that are in.
Yes, operation every day, yes, sir.
So, and you do the six thousand plus miles a day that they drive. And you also take into consideration the majority of our bus drivers have another job, right? They come and do this in the morning, the afternoon, and many of them go to another job. Well, we can't, we can't run routes all day long. I mean, there's, we, we just can't. We don't have enough drivers to do that for one. Right? So there's just, there are a lot, that is just, I want to throw that out there just because that's the reason for the second question. That's the reasons we said, you know, if we can't provide transportation like we would normally do it, can you get your kids to school if we did that? Because, you know, we're looking at all these other issues and we have a, there's a seventy-two passenger bus, what's the other one? Eight, some, eight, seven or something? We can do thirteen of them.
Get one more kid.
One more kid, yeah. And, you know, we practice, I, I had actually, I took them down there at the bus shop. We all went onto a bus and practiced socially distancing on the bus. And it's basically you sit against the window and then the next row diagonal, the next row diagonal, the next row diagonal. That's how you do it. So you're six feet this way and six feet this way. And so that's how we did it all the way to the back of the bus and there were, we got twelve on there.
And then I think there's also, we, we have to consider the families that might have one child, two jobs, two children, three children. I mean, all of those are the different things that we'll have to consider. So, uh, Mr. Morris has already, we've already started talking about it, but just looking at how, the how, uh, it's just something.
And those CDC guidelines you're talking about?
CDC, State Health Department, they're a number, that was six feet number and socially distancing on like transit, like, uh, you know, we got what, Memphis Public Transportation.
The Memphis buses are, they have two doors. And I say that a matter of us has two doors. So they are entering from the back. Or, or regular school bus, we don't have that option. So students have to load from the front. We also have the safety of our drivers that we have to consider. So you have the children, you have the, the bus driver. So all of those are things we will have to consider as we contemplate how, the how.
That first step on the, on a bus is a big old step, isn't it?
Anyway, with your schools, they have transportation issues as well, really.
And the majority of our drivers are sixty-plus years of age. That's something else.
And listen, the other thing is, you know, like you said, we're not, we're not required by law by transportation though. You know, so if parents can get them there, I mean, we're, we're not required by law by transportation. We obviously do that because we want all the kids to come, you know. So, and it's because it's a convenience for the community and for the parents, that's why we do it. But, you know, it may be a mix for a while until we figure out how we can, how we can get the bus to rouse gun and all that kind of thing. And the other thing is, I want to say this to y'all, we are also incredibly cognizant of the fact that there are parents that need to be at work. We realize that. And so that's a big part when we're going through these plans and trying to create a plan. We realize that it's a hardship for some parents who are trying to get their kids to school so that they can get to their jobs. You know, so I just want to say that out loud. We're also working on that so that we can get it, you know, done as quickly as possible so that they can get back to, you know, semi-normal work life.
So are you considering any, possibly opening schools a little bit earlier, earlier drop-off to accommodate those parents?
Possibly. And if some of them maybe make some extra academic time, like tutoring or something, possibly. You know, just the whole schedule itself, we're kind of working on too. So, yeah, Jeff, uh, Jeff Force left out of here today with his tear on fire. So he's working on something. They're even gonna practice running some routes and just see what, you know, what it'd look like, what we can do.
Can you, with the, the kids that are family, they get all the seats together, right?
They could.
They could.
They could.
You gotta map that out.
Yeah.
A lot of mapping out. So I, my expression to, to Jeff was, he said, it's rough water. I said, yeah, but you're getting ready, I'm getting ready to push you in.
Everybody ready to give the shea? So much fun to be talking here.
I've got my written test scheduled for next week.
Definitely a fragile.
Before we leave operations, can you give us another thing on maintenance that's been done, without a doubt, and touch on field house?
Again, so, uh, things are going well. Uh, almost all of the exterior lighting is finished. So we're looking forward to some nice reduction in kinetic energy. Hopefully that's going, that's good. Uh, we've done a lot of improvements as well inside the buildings and outside the buildings. We're clicking off the list that, you know, I showed you all, we have a number of HVAC units ordered and some roof bids that we're going through to get some roofs done.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Some roofs need work done.
Absolutely, yes, sir. We're getting all those done. Matter of fact, I kind of, I thought Bart, I think Mr. Bart wasn't here today, but he's supposed to give me a list of that. I think I was supposed to get it like today. So I'm gonna check with him tomorrow of the bid for roofs and stuff. So I think we should be good there. Now, the field house, number one, and we say this, there's air conditioning in the locker rooms. So, uh, Coach Kirby has sent me a, a number of thank yous and some other folks have too, so that's great. The field house itself, um, we ran into a snag with some coding issues again with the local coding agency. But we think we have worked through some of that with her. And, uh, Donnie actually, uh, sent me an email last week, Charlotte, this week?
Yes, sir.
Last week, sent me an email last week and very politely said, I'm done. So, uh, I think it's just been so frustrating. This thing's been, they've been working on this thing since two thousand fifteen, sixteen, trying to get this thing done. I just think he's just had a snooze ball and he's done. And so he said, look, you know, I'll just, I'll let you know where we are right now, but I think it's best for me and best for you that I, I stopped doing this. And I said, okay, I understand. So we're working on, compared to home school, he was working on the concession stand bathroom and then working, so we're gonna do that next as part of the next part. He was gonna do the concession stand locker room, or the concession stand bathroom first.
So the coding issues just kind of pushed him.
It's, I don't think that was part of it. Yes, sir. But, um, we've got another bid coming in on Monday, we hope. It is a local group that may be bidding that passed on the first time and we hope that's gonna work out well. And we're moving forward. We're gonna get it done. We're, we're moving forward. If, if I have to give you a call when we put on our boats and you meet me out there, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get it done.
That sound good? Make sure Mr. Bart is gonna play some things.
Yes, sir. We'll have a conversation for you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Combs, who, who's kind of moving into work, not even leaving the bay?
Quite frankly, uh, Mr. Bart has stepped up and he's taken a lot of that on. I am assisting with that. And, uh, and also I will say that Mayor Huffman's been really good. I mean, you know, he's let, we've talked to him a number of times and, uh, he's let us use Shannon Reed for some consultation. And he's some of the county folks that have been helpful with that. I mean, I, he, he's really stepped up and helped with that. So I'm, I'll, I'll say that he's been, he's been really good with that, so, and I really appreciate that. But he's, he's helped us. I just met with him a couple of days ago, I think, a day or two ago, and we talked about this exact thing. So he's supportive and helping us get it done.
Anybody else have anything on operation? All right. If I have to report, uh, Ms. Peggy, Mark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have an actual financial report this month or next month, but I do have two very quick things for you. You know, last, uh, time we talked about an amendment from American Fidelity, well, they've gotten yet another amendment which allows those people who have the flexible spending accounts to, uh, take a longer period of time to spend that money. Normally they only have till the first of the year and I think they're extending it to March. But they're making an adjustment for, uh, the people in case COVID has caused them not to be able to go and take care of their medical issues. So that's one thing that they're changing. And then, uh, they're also changing the carryover dollars. If you have a flexible spending account or a medical reimbursable, um, you can save up to $500 to pass on to the next year. Well, they have changed that to $550. So yet again, I need you to say, yes, you want to amend the new American Fidelity plan.
These are for health savings account plans, right?
And medical reimbursements. Yes.
I'll make a motion to, motion by Mr. Clark. After second by Mr. Davis, are there any questions? All those in favor who let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. No, don't.
Thank you. And the only other thing I have, you have in your packet from Wells Fargo. Catchy Middle School was planning to do some fundraising in those last couple of months in schools to kind of help with office supply issues. And of course, the copier machine is the biggest chunk of money that most schools have to pay per month. And, uh, so he got Wells Fargo to extend his plan from six to sixty-three months so that he didn't have to pay as much over the summer. And the, that, what you have is the plan that he has from, uh, Wells Fargo. So that he'll be able to meet this budget. Otherwise, he would not, he would not be able to pay the copier machine.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make my.
Motion by Mr. John. Seconded by Mr. Parker. Are there any questions? Those in favor let me know by saying aye, aye, or those opposed, no. I got, uh, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Do we get any emergency care money?
We do. Um, now, there's several different pots of money. The CARES Act is 1.9 million. That's federal dollars that Dr. Combs, Dr. Bird, Dr. Fisher have decided from Marion Samuel, decided where that money needs to go. I don't know if you guys completed that plan?
That, uh, Mrs. Marion's still working on that application. We've all put feet, feet back into it and we have to submit the application to actually get the money that they, they allotted for us. And so that application, uh, deadline is fast approaching. When is that? Is it?
It's the thirtieth, I think.
The thirtieth?
They, they're going to announce.
Well, July first is when we find, when we find out what we got. It's due before the fifteenth, okay. So, yeah, so the application is due soon, yeah. And so we're gonna get that in and then we give them, you know, say kind of basically this is what we want to do with the money. And so we're gonna get that in, and then we give them, you know, say kind of basically, this is what we want to do with the money. And then they have to approve it, and then they say, yes, you got it, and then we did, or you have to make an adjustment or whatever. So, yes, sir. So we get that.
And then Lisa Bradford is working on another, yeah, the FEMA.
FEMA, FEMA.
Which is reimbursement for what we've expended.
Right. Which includes our food service.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, another one came, by the way, Dr. Combs, the Stafford.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but all of those things, to, to me, the Stafford one was, um, I don't know, you all probably read as much as I have, but I believe I read that it would cost four hundred and eighty-six dollars per child to completely disinfect that child for a year. So those kinds of things, the extra wipes, the extra sanitizer spray, the extra disinfectants, the bomber machines, those things, uh, what I interpreted would go into that. Um, but, um, Lisa Bradford does, uh, the grant, my man, so I imagine she'll be putting some, you know, tissues in there. And foresee.
Mr. Glenn Turner is constantly touching base with our new custodial vendor, Parko, to make sure they understand what they got themselves into. So, uh, but, but those conversations have gone really well. So he's, he's very happy with how that's progressed so far. And the transition thus far has been really good. ABM's been really good about having a nice smooth transition. It's, they, they've really been, they've done a good job.
What kind of money is there for the CARES Act and the FEMA, right?
I know, one point nine for the CARES Act is what we're, what we're allotted.
Yes, sir.
Right? With the FEMA, I don't.
FEMA, we have to write, we have to submit receipts of what we have expended along with the narrative, and they then.
Those, those are both reimbursables.
Yes.
You spend and then they reimburse you. So it's money out first and then they reimburse you.
And we can tell you, another thing that we're putting in the application are, um, paying down like consumable textbook costs. You know, like, because the consumable books are really good even through the high school because the kids can take them home and they have all of it right there with them. So if they had, I mean, it's really good for that. So paying down textbooks, um, a lot of it on technology, you know, increased technology, more devices, more access points, all that kind of stuff. Cars to store them in and charge them in. Um, you know, some of the, the vendor things that we do like Thriveless, um, even the Odysseyware thing that we talked about earlier and Edge Annuity. You know, we're looking at some of those kind of bids to see what else we can get with it. So, I mean, pretty much everything we're doing is pushing toward, um, instruction, basically, with that, with that CARES money. Because it's one-time money, you know?
Yeah, okay. I was gonna ask you a question.
Okay.
Uh, talk about it, if, if we end up having twenty percent of students don't go to school physically, you know, they have to do a thing online, say, whatever, uh, do we have enough technology now to handle that?
Do we have enough technology to support that, like from the district?
Yes.
Yes. Um, but it depends on what they have at home. It still will depend on what they have at home. Um, and so we have to see what those numbers are first and then kind of work it one way or another, you know? One district, I heard they were gonna load stuff on like a flash drive. I was talking to Cameron about this earlier, they're gonna load stuff on a flash drive. And like every week, people come by with that device and they plug that flash drive into the device and download new content. And then they go home with that for a week, and then they go back and they do it again the next time because they just don't have broadband access. That was another county talking about that. But, you know, that's a, that's an option, but I don't know that it's a good option.
Remember when I talked to you the other day about, you know, I, I think, I mean, if we're gonna have that number of kids out and at home and stuff like that, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be optimum, optimum or whatever? Like if a kid could sit in a teacher's classroom at home and see what each of the students is seeing live during the day? Would that take something like Facebook Live or?
That'd be like, that's basically distance learning. So we, we've talked about that. I feel like the, you know, the virtual live classroom, um, and I'll give credit to Lauderdale, I can't, you know, we, we talk to each other all the time. They have this awesome idea called a Zoom room, and they basically have a room in every one of their buildings. It's almost like a television studio, and the teachers take turns going in that room and record a live lesson and then send it out. You know, so there are a number of things that we're looking at. But, you know, you have to keep in mind too, yes, virtual is an option, but it is not like being in that classroom with that teacher in the room. So we're gonna have to think about that because we're gonna have a lot of gaps already from the two and a half months that we missed last year. And it's really, we gotta catch some of those kids up and, you know, just being on the computer is not gonna do it. So we, we have to, we have to figure out some combination. But obviously, we're gonna have to have that option. You know, one of the things that the epidemiologist said, is that right? Um, was, you know, what's your plan if you have one child, uh, test positive for COVID? What's your plan? What if you have two? What's your plan? I mean, we have to be that detailed in the plan that we send in. Because, you know, if you have one child test positive, then there's something you have to do about that. And if there's two, then if there's three, if there's a staff member, if there's so many, you shut down the school, you shut down all schools, you shut down one. There are all these guidelines that all vary, and we have to make a decision based on all those things on what we do. So, you know, we hope that, that number stays down and doesn't continue to rise, and that would make a big impact on what we do.
Will they be taking the temperature of each child to him in the school?
We did, we, we thought about that, you know, but, um, the other thing is, you know, within the Health Department confirmed this. You know, the two biggest indicators for kids for COVID-19 are headache and diarrhea.
It's not bigger.
And so sometimes, sometimes not necessarily even.
It's just not good anymore. What I wanted to ask you about is testing, are we gonna be swabbing COVID tests for these schools? That way we can, our nurses can administer on site?
That's a good question. I, I have not heard that. Have you, Dr. Fisher? I, I have not heard that.
That's from the Health Department at this point. I know Cindy's been, of course, talking, Corinne was involved, but I, that has not come up in discussion. I think that's being controlled by the Health Department.
Right. I think they're kind of keeping control of that. But they did talk about in the buildings when we do reopen, basically you have a sick room and a well room, right? So if kids come in and they're sick or they have symptoms, they don't feel good, they go to basically that sick room. But if you have a child that's coming in to have blood sugar tested, or, you know, they just, I don't know, have a, you know, their, uh, their eye issues or something, they go to the well room. You know, they go there for somebody and check them out. I mean, it's real, we're gonna have to be real specific on, you know, how we do that.
Which is additional space that we will have to set aside just for that, that we know.
Also additional aid service you're gonna do with your teacher.
Absolutely.
To have these questions in place to know.
What, where, how?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that will help with that question you asked me earlier, Mr. Vincent, about that percentage that I've, that I'm, that I think might happen. I think the more people know about the details of the plan and, you know, and how, how we're really trying hard to make sure that we keep it as safe as possible, uh, I think there'll be more people that say, okay, yeah, I feel a little better about that, I'm, I'm gonna send them. You know, so we're hoping to get to that point. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't want the parents to be concerned out here too, but, you know, we, we are trying to get them back in school because that's where they need to be.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
TWS double A contracts forward.
Yesterday, TWS double A, we have those weekly meetings, there's one on Monday, one on Wednesday, one on Friday, every week with the Tennessee Department of Education. Yesterday, um, Bernard Childers from TWS double A was supposed to be on that Wednesday call. He down there, something wrong with his mic or something didn't work and it didn't work, so we never heard from him. That was Wednesday. We, we never heard from him. Um, but the guidance that we've gotten thus far is basically what we are doing right now. And that's fall sports, keeping them in, you know, ten or fewer, temping them, making sure that you're, you know, doing all that kind of stuff, checking them, asking them questions, how they've been tested, all that kind of stuff. That's the guidance that we have right now. Now, we're waiting to hear more. Uh, and I'll go ahead and throw this out there, our, uh, our person who is, um, beginning from this point on, who's gonna be, uh, basically handling athletics for the county, is gonna be, um, Steve Macklin. So Steve is already, you know, he's had a lot of coaching experience anyway, but Steve is already our junior and, uh, our middle and high school supervisor. So he's also just gonna go ahead and take on the athletics role too. And, you know, he may get some help with Mr. Newton every once in a while, something like that. For the most part, he's gonna be the go-to for athletics. So he has been touching base with TWS double A and making sure that we're staying compliant. They all had to submit plans. We're looking at, um, on the fifteenth, starting to open it up to, you know, some baseball and some basketball and things like that. But they are submitting their plans to Steve for him to review and us to look at before we push forward.
Do you think we'll see football?
I'm hoping we do. I mean, I don't, uh, we have not had any indicator from TWS double A thus far that we will not see it, I'll put it that way.
They don't have to have, they have to do a test on my test positive.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Everybody in their little workout group or whatever it is. Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything to add on that, on that part? Next item on our agenda is, uh, consideration of a new contract for, uh, Dr. Combs, superintendent. Uh, if we look at this, uh, superintendent evaluation summary, you know, I don't see how I got to be here, but, you know, don't wait, he could be any better than just, hey, I don't know, I'm just being honest with you. But anyway, uh, Dr. Combs and Steve Shields and I have talked the last couple of months. And, uh, Dr. Combs wishes, and, and us wish that, um, they could couple, uh, two more years, you know? He's been here two, and he wants to extend his contract two years, wants to give four years from today forward. Four more years, and make a decision, so. Uh, I have a motion, there are any questions for? The monetary, everything's the same, it's just, uh, terminate the old contract and, uh, making a new contract with different dates. The, the, the plan's the same and, uh, you know, Dr. Combs is, uh, okay with that. He and I have talked about it, and, uh, he's happy to be here, he's, he's doing a great job, and I just think it's a good thing to do that this, to extend his contract and move right along with the C P's, uh, being a whole staff. They've, they've worked good together.
Think we've been lucky to have you.
We've been lucky to have you, and, and his staff and them with it too, they've all been, been perfect as far as I've seen it going. I've got a good team, we're gonna do that, I tell you. I have a motion to extend the contract. I've got a motion to, uh, I, I, I got one I'm gonna read, then, then you can make it, okay? This is, this is, uh, this is already, uh, Steve Shields has, uh, helped with this. I move that the contract been formed with the twenty Dr. Combs of this board commenced in July the first of twenty eighteen and continued to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, but terminated by mutual agreement and that the board offer a new contract to Dr. Combs to be director of schools commenced in July one twenty twenty and in July, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Motion by, that motion Benson is seconded, uh, you can second it, right? Are there any questions, any whatsoever?
Look, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or discussion?
Although we're favoring the board, ought I've said it before, but I don't mind being redundant. Uh, we were not a level five school, and now our school district, and we are now.
Yeah.
And I can get the percentages, uh, exactly, but I, it, it's around around twelve percent in the state that are level five districts.
Yeah.
So we, we, we've headed in the right direction of this leadership.
We want COVID-19 to go down. It will all be a contract extension. All those in favor, uh, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Close and pass. Dr. Combs, uh, we forgot to perform more. Said I've got a contract right here and you and I will sign it after, uh, it's clear. Would you like to add, and I not go?
I would just, you know, thank you. And I, I can't emphasize enough, I know, you know, everybody seems to say that, but I have a phenomenal team. I mean, these people are great. I mean, y'all get to hear, you know, some of them when you come in and speak, but, I mean, everybody knows there's no way to do a job like that one right in there without an amazing team. And I have an amazing team, fabulous teachers, great kids, great parents. It's just, it's just a good team. I mean, it's, it's easy, and I'm gonna say, I mean, y'all are easy to work with. I've told you before, I go places and hear these horror stories about the superintendent relationship with the board, and I just don't see it. I mean, y'all are great. I mean, even when you disagree for a nice time, it's pretty cool. That doesn't happen everywhere, so thank you. It's, I, I.
We'll invite you and we'll be glad to have you again.
Is, is there any other business?
I was just gonna say, come December, we don't wanna hear the words, I'm done.
I'll do my best, thanks, try to let that happen. I, I, I do wanna add one thing. Okay, well then, um, I wanna throw this in, just so you know, we're talking about the numbers and people being into the kind of the school. This to me is a positive. Um, thus far, we had a hundred and ninety-six, um, and a hundred and ninety-six students applied for open enrollment. So, you know, we set it up outside, there's, uh, Ms. Leanne and Ms. Dawn and Ms. Renee, and all them have done, set up outside. Mr. James, they've kind of moved out, Mr. Fields, and they've had it all rolling through here. Had a tent set up outside, the big bus that are, has the sign on it, and they're rolling across the back. A hundred and ninety-six applied for open enrollment, and, cause this is our first year doing it, we've had ten non-resident transfer requests already. So ten people out of the district have already applied to come here.
You know where they're coming from?
I think it's a mixture of Fayette County, Millington, is that right?
Shelby County, yes, sir.
Some Shelby County.
And they have to pay lots of tuition.
That's like seventy thousand dollars. They pay seven dollar, fifty dollars.
Seventy?
Yes, seventy fifty. And then, of course, you know, the, the state money, we get the state enrollment money for them. We're just, we're glad people have heard of Shelby County and are interested in coming here. This, that's awesome.
Any, any other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Parker, was pending.